Ms. Martinez, um. My, uh, little dashboard is not working, so we're gonna go ahead and do a roll call. Old-fashioned way if we can, um.
Okay, um, Counselor Carson?
Here.
Counselor Krebs?
Here.
Counselor Grego?
Present.
Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Counselor Hensley?
Here.
And Counselor Daniel and Counselor Bee Hill are absent tonight and their absences are unexcused.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. It's the agenda approval. Counselor, uh, Grego?
I'll make a motion to approve their agendas presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, up next we have, um, citizen comments. Uh, this is the segment of the agenda where, um, we allow our citizens to come up to the podium and make comments. We do ask if you're still talking after three minutes that at the three-minute mark, we will politely ask you to, um, uh, stop making your comments at that particular time. Ms. Martinez, I don't have any, uh, comment cards. So can you give the Zoom participants instruction of how to raise their hands so we could recognize them?
Yes, sir. Um, if you're on the Zoom app and you wanna speak for citizen comment, you'll use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of the screen. Or if you're on a telephone, it'll be star nine.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, Ms. Martinez.
I don't either, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and wrap up the citizen comment section and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh, ceremonial items tonight, we have four different proclamations. And since the city council, we work together as a team instead of one person reading all the proclamations, we share in that role. Um, so tonight, we're gonna have four different proclamations. Uh, the first one is gonna be read by, uh, Counselor, uh, Krebs and it's a professional municipal clerk week proclamation. Uh, Ms. Martinez, that you and Ms. Portillo wanna come up to the mic over there so when she read it, we could recognize you, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Righty. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides professional link, link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state provision, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now, therefore, on behalf of the entire city council, do we hereby proclaim the week of April thirtieth through May sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week? And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks, Holly Martinez, Susanna Gallegos, and Ariel Portillo Lawson, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez, would you like to say a few words?
He asked you first. I guess she doesn't wanna say a few words first, um. I guess this is just like time to toot our own horn, I guess, so we're, we just, we always do this proclamation, um. And it's just to celebrate Great Clerks Week, so this is the fifty-fourth annual, it's one of the longest standing positions in cities and municipalities. Um, so it's a fun job and like, I think we all love it, but it's really hard to explain and I think, like, you can see why. Um, so I am see the, um, promoters of this proclamation, like, they did give us some little fact sheets, so, um, so this is the fifty-fourth year and like typical responsibilities of the municipal clerk and deputy clerks. So we maintain the official minutes, council minutes, ordinance books, all records and documents, um, index all actions of council. We issue licenses and permits, which we do for liquor licensing, special events, um, special events that include liquor. Um, security guard licenses, all kinds of different licenses, um. Sometimes process contract and agreements, keepers of community history and vital records. So I feel like that's a big one, we get a lot of people that call randomly and ask us the randomest questions ever and we, we can find the answers. Um, so I just, it's a fun area to work in and I enjoy it and I have a great team with me, so Ariel's new verb and so she's learning, but, um, Suzanne has been with me eight years and I think she loves it too, I hope. Uh, but I think it's a fun job and I have a great team and I, I thank you guys for allowing us the flexibility to serve our citizens here.
Awesome, awesome. Well, we wanna thank you all for all the work that you all do and it's really good to see your team that you have and you also have a college intern that helps you out as well.
Sure, yeah.
And, uh, that's, she's, she's learning for some good examples, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, we're gonna come down and present you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next proclamation is, uh, going to be the Historic Preservation Month proclamation. And I believe that's, uh, Counselor Carson's gonna read that, so if we have someone here, okay, yes, please.
Ready?
Yes.
Whereas the city of Alamosa in celebration of, of the month of May, as archaeology and his historic preservation month recognizes that historic sites and structures in the community are symbols of our heritage and our valuable assets to the quality of life in our community. These structures anchored our downtown, our residential areas, and the larger community, upholding the native character of our city and instilling civic pride by virtue of their very presence. Their potential as resources and attractors for the heritage tourism is great. The events, businesses, and experiences these sites have hosted connect us to one another and form a vital part of the fabric of our community. And whereas Alamosa's many historic structures represent a diversity of economic and architectural trends that are integral to the past and future development of this great community. Founded a hundred and forty-five years ago, the city is actively engaged in recognizing these emblems of our heritage through the Alamosa Historic Registry. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Ty Coleman, Mayor of Alamosa, on behalf of the entire city council, proclaims the month of May two, two thousand and twenty-three as Historic Preservation Month and encourages its citizens to advance historic preservation activities in the community.
Good job, good job, thank you, Counselor Carson.
Thank you for, uh, making that proclamation for May Historic Preservation Month. Uh, uh, our Historic Preservation Committee, of course, is proud of the beautiful buildings that we have designated. Uh, this evening, uh, you have on a consent calendar to change the name of Zapata Park to Zapata Historic Park. Um, our history is, uh, something that I sure am proud of, though I have nothing to do with, uh, that. But, uh, to think that my city was the first one in the United States to pass a desegregation issue uh, and say that all children have the right to go to school together, uh, pretty proud of that. Um, also on your agenda, oh, no, that's on your agenda this evening. I'm hoping that, uh, shortly we will come to you and ask that you designate Zapata Park as, uh, being on the Historic Register. And I think next Tuesday, when we have our quarterly meeting, uh, we will, as a committee, approve putting the depot on the local register. It has been on the National Register since nineteen ninety-three. My thought is about time that we get it on the local register. Anyway, thank you all for doing that.
Wow, we thank you for all the work you all do and, um, keep it up, okay? We're gonna come down and present that to you, okay? All right, that brings us to the next proclamation. Uh, two thousand and twenty-three Arbor Day proclamation, I believe we have some audience members who would like to probably come up to the podium before Counselor Grego reads this proclamation. Counselor Grego serves on our tree board, so that's why we had him, um, read the proclamation tonight. Counselor Grego?
First item, word.
Oh, go right ahead.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for letting me read this proclamation, uh, celebrating Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was the first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious top soils by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, reducing life, giving oxygen, and providing habitat for our wildlife. And whereas the trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business area, and beautifies our community. And whereas trees, wherever they're planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, the mayor, Ty Coleman, hereby proclaim Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the city of Alamosa and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and wetlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this, of this and future generation.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. And would you like to say a few words before we come down and present?
I'll keep it short because as you see on the agenda shortly, we'll be having a tree board update, but, uh, once again, I mean, this is, it's been going on in the country for over a hundred and fifty years and Alamosa has been celebrating it for thirty-three of those years, uh, so that's, I think that's pretty historic. And, uh, one thing I will mention while we still have more people in the room is, uh, and I'll leave some of these out as we are next Thursday, having our Arbor Day celebration, uh, with a community event by planting some additional trees out here in Cole Park, so I'll give, uh, some more information on that planting when, uh, we give the board update.
Okay, well, thank you so much and we'll come down and present that to you. Okay, our next proclamation is going to be read by, um, Counselor Hensley's Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day proclamation. I believe Chief is in the back, he'll come up to the podium.
As he's walking up, it's always hard to be the fourth one of one of these, so, um, not, not that this is any less valuable. And each of the others were introduced in regards to being on committees and stuff. I'm a fan of the police, it's not because I've gotten the most police tickets or anything. Anyway, so to move on. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of law enforcement and the Alamosa Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Alamosa. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the city of Alamosa Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency with unceasingly provide, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. And whereas the mayor, Ty Coleman, calls all the citizens of Alamosa and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Police Week with the appropriate ceremonies in which all our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and securities of all citizens. I further call upon the all citizens of Alamosa to observe May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Ty Coleman, now by the virtue of the authority vested in him as mayor and city of Alamosa and on the behalf of the entire city council, do hereby honor law enforcement's officers across the country and the Alamosa Police Department and proudly proclaim the week of May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Police Week and May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. All right, Chief.
All right, um, not much, uh, you know, we appreciate having a council that supports us and what we do. This is clearly bigger than just Alamosa PD, um, like she's mentioning, this is throughout the entire country for those that have, you know, given the ultimate sacrifice to provide services and protect their communities, so. Um, please join us, May tenth, at five-thirty in front of the PD, we'll, uh, have the ceremony there. We'd sure love to see you all and the community if you can make it as well. Thank you.
Yes, um, Counselor Hensley wanna add, would like to add something?
I would, so just my own personal test, I was joking about not having any tickets or not having the most tickets, but I have to say I truly appreciate, I know these are tough times for the police. Um, you know, it's, there's a lot of challenges and I am so proud to have our police force do what they do. I feel very protected and safe and I just wanna pass that on to you and to your crew.
Good, thank you. And Chief, I'll, I'll wrap things up since I don't see any lights on. We're grateful for the leadership that you bring to our, uh, young officers that are out there and, uh, just continue to do what you're doing because you're making a big difference in our community, especially when it comes to trust. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll come down and present it. Thank you to all council members who read those proclamations, I really appreciate it. Thank you. All right, you're welcome, no worries. Okay, that brings us to the, um, next item on the agenda, Consent Calendar A. Counselor Grego?
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Calendar A as presented, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Under Regular Business, Presentation from Outside Agencies, tonight we have two, uh, outside agencies. The first one to report will begin an annual update from the Bicycle Coalition.
Evening, Council, thanks so much for having me, um, here tonight. My name is Grantley Showalter, um, and I'm the, I work for the Alamosa Bicycle Coalition. Um, just wanna say thanks so much for the support, uh, for the past couple of years. Um, in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, the Alamosa Bicycle Co- Coalition has expanded our impact on the community and served more of our, um, people in Alamosa. We've connected more folks with bikes, offered more mechanic classes, and started, uh, connection with SLV Go, which is another nonprofit, um, to offer bike rides to the community, um, both here in Alamosa and in the tra- uh, trails surrounding and, um, different parts of the San Luis Valley. So really excited about that, really excited about the, um, ways that we've grown this past year. Um, in two thousand and twenty-three, we've also, um, expanded our partnership with Jen Wild, which is a coalition of nonprofits that serve kids in outdoors here in, uh, the valley. Um, we've really kind of gotten connected with them and been able to kind of, um, serve the people that different people work with. Um, Boys and Girls Club, um, Alpine Achievers Initiative, PALS, that kind of thing, really kind of, uh, connected with more folks through that, um, coalition, which is exciting. Uh, we've also, just this past weekend, we hosted a Train the Trainer for Bike Rodeos. Um, it's a activity for the community, um, where kids can practice bike skills, learn about bike safety, and just have fun on, on bikes. Um, that kind of started through a connection with Don Thompson and, um, Heather Brooks, kind of talking about how can we promote bikes here? Um, and Bike Colorado, which is a net, which is a statewide organization, um, came down and did a Train the Trainer, so we all kind of um, got to learn how to lead those events, um, and then we had one, um, at Tieranueva Housing Complex. We've also, um, been planning a lot, um, this month, May is Bike to Work Month. Um, so we've been planning a lot for some different activities, um, for the community this month. Um, some, some ones that are coming up, uh, include this weekend is a Bike Swap, um, which is kind of like a, basically a yard sale, um, of different bikes and bike parts. Uh, people are welcome to come and check it out, it's gonna be here at Cole Park at the North Pavilion this Saturday. Um, we're having an alley cat race, which is just kind of a fun, um, uh, ride around town. Um, and just kind of bringing the community together. And then Bike to Work Day, the National Bike to Work Day is May nineteenth. Um, so we're encouraging everyone this whole month, but especially on May nineteenth, to get on your bike and ride to work. Uh, we're gonna be at Zapata Park, um, we'll have some coffee and, um, some sort of food like donuts or something, not sure exactly what, to, to give out. Um, and then kind of also that day, uh, in partnership with the Parks and Rec Department of the city, we're installing two more bike repair stations. Um, there's one out here at Cole Park, which is, um, several different bike tools on cables and a bike pump, um, that people can stop by, use the tools, air up their tires, whatever. Um, we're gonna put, uh, one in Zapata Park and one down at the rec center. Uh, really grateful to the city for, um, providing funds for those, um, stations that we're gonna put in and the Parks and Rec Department for kind of making that connection, so. Yeah, just wanna say a big thanks for, for helping us do the work and serve the community, uh, y'all are great.
Thank you, and, uh, we're gonna have Counselor Carson like to make a comment.
Um, thank you, I think, I think what you guys are doing is great, uh, I see people using those bike repair stations all the time. I really think that's a good service, uh, you know, not everybody can afford to go to a bike shop. Are you guys gonna do more of the bike rodeos?
Yeah, uh, we have plans to host a bunch of them this coming year. Um, the school district has kind of reached out, um, because they're going to a four-day school, um, week, at least I think that's the, what everyone's talking about, um, so we're, we're working on some bike programming for those Fridays, um, including some bike rodeos, hopefully held at the schools. And then also we're looking at, um, potentially holding them, um, at some different, um, specific locations to kind of get some, a little bit more targeted audience as well.
Awesome, good job, that's great, good to hear.
Looks like I don't see any more lights on, I'll just wrap things up, Grant, I really like the, uh, events that you all have scheduled. The, um, Bike Swap, the Alley Cat Race, and, uh, Bike Work Day, so I'm gonna try to make sure I participate at least in the Bike Work Day for sure. So wish you much success, keep it up.
Great, yeah, thanks so much.
Before Grantley sits down, I just wanna say, um, from working in other communities, especially in Boulder County, Bike to Work Day is like a huge thing and a lot of cities do a lot of bike education and, and throw a lot of stuff. We haven't really had the capacity to do a lot of that, so I'm just so grateful for Grantley and Dawn and other cyclists in our communities who are picking up the slack in that area and, and really trying to do more. And Grantley, um, we're trying to connect him and Dawn with Jasmine so we can do more public education on the rules of the road, both for cyclists and for motorists and those different types of things to become a little bit more regular so we can improve in that area and then, um, Grantley's also offered to try Grantley's also offered to try to pull together some volunteers and work with Biata on identifying maybe where we need some bike lanes, knowing we can't put them everywhere. But what are some of the, some of the key areas? And so they're going to be kind of working through that planning process as well. But this is a thing where when you're a small community, you don't always have like the planning staff and engineers and stuff that the bigger communities have to do a lot of this. And it really is so, so helpful when we have community volunteers like this. And so I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow to talk about that. So, yeah, I'm really excited about that, too.
And to you too, Dawn.
Okay, but thank you, thank you. Good job, good job. Yeah, very good presentation there. Brings us up next to the annual update from South Central Colorado Seniors.
I'll stand here since I'm so short.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank Mayor Ty Coleman, Manager Heather Brooks, and of course, the City Council members for all your support and for allowing me to, to present tonight. First and foremost, for those that are watching this on the other side, if they don't know who I am, I'm Monica Wolf. I'm Director of South Central Colorado Seniors, who is the local area agency on aging. We do provide services for Region Eight, which is all six counties of the San Luis Valley. We appreciate everything that the City of Alamosa has done for us. This last year, of course, has been very difficult coming down from the pandemic. And of course, watching the older adults, we do serve those that are sixty and over, maintain their health and just issues that they've, they're suffering from. As we all know, that the pandemic was not only hard on the younger population, but the older adults especially. We've seen lots of deaths come about. Unfortunately, we can't say it's pandemic-related, but I could tell you there's a lot of things that we've seen that have happened because of it. Our role as the area agency on aging is to service those sixty and over. And in many aspects, our biggest program is our nutrition program. Unfortunately, there's so much need out there and, you know, we definitely service those first that are most in need. We did add another leg to this program, so to speak. We've got Congregate Meals, which is the meal sites that have all opened up during pandemic. All of our sites were closed. However, we did continue to serve the Congregate folks by offering grab-and-go meals. And so they would just drive through and pick up the meals and then eat them at home. Again, we did also still continue to provide our homebound meals to those that are not mobile or just cannot leave their home without assistance. So, and naturally, we also did offer those that went to the senior center and they were transported by the senior center. And because they, our meal site wasn't opened, we gave them the opportunity to get on a homebound, the homebound meal program to add so that they could continue to get fresh, fresh meals. And so now that the pandemic is ending, so to speak, we are seeing a huge group of these people come to, our people come to our meal sites, and it's a wonderful site. The one fear that we had was definitely isolation. We did contact them several days a week and especially our homebound and just make sure that they were okay. Did they need anything? Our drivers were more than happy to go out and provide whatever they needed. If they needed to go shopping, they took them shopping. We took them shopping. So, you know, so of course, our needs have changed since the pandemic. Their needs have changed since the pandemic. Mom's Meals, the one program that we added to our nutrition programs is Mom's Meals. And I don't know if any of you have heard of this, but it's a, an organization outside of the state of Colorado that we've partnered with. And because there are so many that are living now off-grid and in the outlying areas, we have a lot of people that are coming in, have contacted us because, you know, they come in to this so-called beautiful place and we all know that they're going out to places that don't have any type of plumbing or, you know, the deserted areas. And so they don't know this until they come. And so we have tried to reach out to them as best we can. So we partnered with Mom's Meals. And what they are is a drop-ship organization. And so they drop-ship fresh meals. They are not frozen, but they are fresh. And they drop ship in increments of two weeks at a time. And then they can also choose if they are diabetic or they're, you know, have heart issues or they're, you know, need period foods, that type of thing. They can get this through Mom's Meals. And so they come through us and we refer them over. We do cover the cost of their meals. However, I can tell you that the costs are quite about higher than, you know, than they would pay for our home, our, our meals. But, you know, it's turned out really well. One problem that we've come up with is we've always been, had a contract with, under the CSBG grant. And so when it changed over from San Luis Valley Community Action Agency, we lost the contract. We have not yet received a new contract or yet had a chance to, the opportunity to talk with the new fiscal agent to see, you know, what qualifications are to gain another access to another contract. And so that money alone was paying for our Mom's Meals. And so right now, we've stopped any new Mom's Meals coming onboard, those clients that are in need of new Mom's Meals, just because we don't have the funding for Mom's Meals specifically. So, you know, we are looking for funding for, for, to continue that and bring that back up. That program is starting to grow. And as we see people coming in, we really need that. We really need that service. One really positive thing is we did get a grant through Senate Bill two ninety. And so that grant was specifically distributed to all area agencies on aging within. And I'm not sure if it was nationwide, but I know for sure it was statewide. For any of you that don't know, there are sixteen area agencies on aging in the state of Colorado. We are one of two private nonprofits, so we are not tied in with the council of government. And so we are a direct service provider, which number one is good because, you know, if there are any programs that through this, through the state unit on aging or that come down from the feds or that were tied in with the OAA, which is the Older American Act, we can add those to our, our services. But the bad thing about it is that we, we are a direct service provider. And so we rely on funding hugely. And naturally, we get state funding, federal funding, local government. But, you know, now that the pandemic has so-called ended, the state and the feds are asking that we go back to what our normal funding restrictions are. They had been modified a little bit so we can work around them and change them as needed to meet the needs. And now that we move back to where we were, it really limits, you know, what exactly we can go out and do. So that's an unfortunate thing. But with this new, well, with the funds that we got, we had to draw up a proposal. And then the state unit on aging had a committee who voted on the triple As that were awarded funding from the Senate bill. The Senate bill was like three million dollars, I think it was. And so our proposal, actually, it was more than that. I'm sorry, I can't really remember. But our proposal, I did a proposal for a new administration office. And if anybody has seen our administration office, it's really, it's this little house and we are really trying to maneuver around it. And so we desperately needed that. So we were able to, we were awarded nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We were able to purchase land and we'll put, we're in the process of working to put up a, a new admin building. Staff, we definitely need staff. And so, you know, we can bring in new staff that way also. And then also what the plan is, is we would like to include in their computer lab, room for a computer lab for our older adults. Also, you know, our older adults have a, and not older adults, everybody, I think, at one point or another that's new to their phones or, or new to the new phones that are coming through, we want to continue to, or have phone training. And I think that would be really exciting. And then also, we are looking this next fiscal year or this next calendar year, when tax, tax season rolls around, is to having retired tax accountants come in and take care of taxes for our older adults. And so those, those are the three items that we're hoping, you know, the plan is to take, take it and run with them this next calendar year. You know, I, I do have, and I, I should have, I, I will hand these out before I leave. But I do have our final report here, which goes into a lot of detail as to where we were, what happened and, and the good things and not so good things. But I just want everybody to know that, you know, our older adults are out there. And I think that so many things have changed and our older adults have somewhat been forgotten. And they, you know, they are you know, just left behind, I guess you could say. And so we see this on a day-to-day basis. And we just ask that, you know, friends and family and, and anybody that knows of someone that's, that's home alone or in need of any help whatsoever, we are here and this is our job. And so, you know, anybody that comes in for services, and I do want to just state this, that you know, I know that we have a lot requesting services. And if someone is denied, it's not because it, you know, we want it that way. It's just that because of the funding that we have and the need that's out there, we really have to look at those most in need.
What we're going to do is, if you don't mind, if you can pass that information around to us and then I'm going to open it up for councils to make any comments right now. Council Grego?
Yeah.
Thank you so very much.
I guess I was going to ask Monica that, the, the Mom's Meals that you talked about, are those in conjunction with the homebound meals that you spread out? Or how does that work?
So the Mom's Meals specifically goes to those that are in the outlying areas. Our drivers, our homebound drivers, they definitely are serve those that are in the city. And then they do go out three to four miles outside of the city to deliver. But if you have, if we have calls from physicians that call and they refer their patient over to us requesting a certain specialty diet, then we do serve those with the Mom's Meals. And then the others go to the outline areas of any community within the valley. But we do have some within the city of Alamosa that are receiving Mom's Meals because of diabetes or because of other chronic illnesses that they have. So, and they, right now, they're running right about eight dollars a meal. So.
I just want to thank you for, you know, you're right. Sometimes they forget about our seniors. And some of them are living by themselves and some of them just only see that driver that comes up to deliver that meal. Just that conversation and just that social, just looking forward to see. And I've, I've known a lot of people that get those meals and they really enjoy visiting with somebody that, just to see a friendly face or even speak to something. So the program that you do is, it's really, it's really needed out there and you guys do a great, great job. So, thank you.
I don't see any other lights on, so I'll go ahead and wrap things up. Miss Wolf, thank you so very much for coming out here today. We appreciate what you're doing for our senior population. It makes a big difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your support.
Oh, you. And that brings us to the next item on our agenda, the Tree Board Annual Update.
Good evening. Thanks again for doing the Arbor Day proclamation. As a reminder for the City Council and the rest of the public, that's one of the requirements to maintain the Tree City USA status that we've, as I mentioned before, have done for thirty-three years so far. One of the other requirements is having some sort of advisory board. And unfortunately, due to other people's schedules, I'm the only one that's in attendance tonight. But as a reminder, we also have Meg Dudley, who's a co-chair, so herself and, and me are jointly do the meetings. She usually does, gets the agenda going and I usually do the, the meeting part. But we've, we swap back and forth and, and it has worked out real well. I think this is the second year in a row we've been doing that. And then we have Kevin Ruball, who's with Adam State with their grounds committee, grounds services. And then Melissa Freeman, who's with ASU, but then also just a concerned citizen that has a, a beautiful yard and takes care of it real well. So I think she, she represents the town nicely. And then, of course, we also have the, the City Council folks or the Laesians. So this year, we, as we know, Liz Thomas was there. And then with the backup with Christina Daniels. And we're, welcome back Charlie Gray, because I feel like you were the Laesian somewhere about like seventy, eight years ago. But I've, I've been on the tree board for, for ten years now, so I, it's getting fuzzy back there. So some of the other things going on for the year is, starting this last year, as we started having with Parks and Rec, Christina George showing up and doing the minutes for the meetings, which has worked out wonderfully for us because then we can just focus on the, the discussions and the needs. And she usually has them ready within like five minutes after the meeting and is emailing them to us. And she also was the one that worked on the flyer for the event, the planting event. Did you guys get one of these as part of your packet?
I don't think so. I can grab them and hand them out for you.
Sure, if you don't mind. We, she literally just got this ready like yesterday for us. And she has also been key in getting ready the, the Street Tree Cost Share Program and helping advertise that with the, with the city. And so one of the things with the Tree Cost Share Program is we did, this is our third year doing it. For the first two years, we had it as a fifty percent cost share. And we had, on the average, I think we got four or five applicants. And they did good planting jobs, but we didn't use all the money that the city had allocated. So we discussed as a board how else we could be changing this program to potentially get more people applying and reaching out for trees. So one of the things we tried this year was moving up to a seventy-five percent cost share. And as of now, we have nine applications already in. And one of them is for, I can't remember the name of the HOA, but a little HOA for, with multiple trees in there, too. So we're looking at planting well over a dozen trees for that program this year. So that's, that's going to be very beneficial towards the city. And then some of the other things that went on as part of the Tree City USA, there's an annual report, like most people have to do with anything. And when they upload that, there's metrics they have to put in. And so just some metrics for last year. The city planted twenty-two trees. And of that, eleven of them were at the Alamosa Recycling Center. And we did that as a celebration. And there was, at that event, there was twelve city staff and six community volunteers. And this was part of a Excel grant through the Colorado Tree Coalition. So they actually paid for three quarters of the cost of those trees. So they covered twenty-seven hundred bucks of the expense of those trees. And I think, I, I personally, I'm biased with trees, but I think it's increasing the value and how you, when you pull into there, you're not just staring at chain link fences. Now you have some, some aesthetics to it as well. They pruned seven hundred and twenty trees, which, quick math, that's at least two trees a day. They removed thirty-four trees. So unfortunately, last year, we did not plant more trees than we removed. But we're hoping to turn that around this year with this planting event. Because this year, we applied with, to the Colorado Tree Coalition for four thousand dollars. They had a higher amount. And Andy was able to find four thousand dollars for a match on that. So we're going to be planting approximately, this says twenty-six new trees, might actually end up being a couple more once the full budget comes out. All around Cole Park, some closer to the building, some at the far end. All around Cole Park, some closer to the building, some at the far end by North Pavilion as well. So we're gonna really push an effort forth because we, we feel like a lot of folks, this is really the showcase park in, in town with, with all the events that go on and on any given day, you can always find somebody in Cole Park, even in the middle of the winter. And then I would say those are the accomplishments for the year, but like any, any board out there, we encourage more members. So we, we have room for, how many, I think two more we can fit? I should know that? So if there's any citizens out there that are interested in trees, you don't have to be a tree expert at all. You just have to enjoy their shade and have a perspective of a concerned citizen on where you might like trees in town that I'd encourage you to apply to the city to help us out. And that's, that's our, a quick update of what the tree board's been doing for the year.
Wow, that is great. You all have been extremely busy. Counselor Grego and then Counselor Hensley.
I think you're.
Counselor Hensley?
Either way.
Yeah, you go first.
Honestly, it's a fun board to be on. One of the things that you could mention, because I, I think it's pretty exciting, is the tree, the match. As far as the community members, if they want to plant a tree, it's similar to the sidewalk. And so there's a match of, you go through the process of the grant and you can get a tree at your house and things like that. So I think that's really awesome and I'd love to see more people take advantage of that.
And I think it's like any new program, they start out slow. And I think the, the momentum after a couple of years has been building on that. So I mean, yeah, thanks again for the city on, on supporting those efforts.
Counsel Grego?
I, I was gonna ask the same question. When you say seventy-five percent, Adam, how much money are we looking at? Can I go over there and buy a thousand dollar tree and you're gonna pay seventy-five percent of that?
There, there is, I, I did not bring the application with me. So I don't remember what the.
There's a percentage, right?
There, there is a percentage. There is a maximum amount on there. I don't wanna quote it because I don't remember what it is off the top of my head. Application's online though. So how, how it works? They fill out the application. And as a tree board, we're actually not meeting the second Wednesday in May, this, because I'm gonna be out next week for a work meeting. We're actually meeting this at the seventeenth. So we, we will look over the applications and say yay or nay, and then basically they, they can show up to, this is what's great about it, it supports local businesses too. They can show up to the Green Spot or North River Greenhouse and pick up their tree. And they just have to pay twenty-five percent of the cost. And then the businesses will send the, the rest of the invoice to the city and the city pays for it. So, yeah, you don't even, it's not even a reimbursement program. You just literally have to be out the twenty-five percent. So if you're, you're buying a hundred dollar tree, that's, that's only costing you twenty-five dollars to improve your yard. Now, that doesn't cover if you're paying somebody to plant the tree or, or if you're buying some fencing to protect it. But still, that's, that's a pretty good deal. If I could go into a store and get something seventy-five percent off, I, I would sign up.
One other question I had was, you said you removed thirty-four trees. They were removed because they were sick trees or in the way or why? Why were those removed?
That's a good question. I'm not sure on all of them. I know that a couple of them were killed by deer. There are, a couple of them were actually new plants that the deer had rubbed the bark around there in the fall and had, had girdled them. And then there was some removed over in the wilderness with some of the wildfire mitigation efforts going on. And then some just, just died for various reasons. So there, there's a couple of reasons in there for the removal.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll, I'll see you in the next meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Keep up the great work. Appreciate you.
Thanks a lot. And I will leave the rest of these flyers out by the, where the out front there for people to pick up. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Carson, I didn't see your light.
No, it's all right. I was just looking because I, you said that there's an application process to do the, the tree, the tree match?
Correct.
So I clicked on the link and just a heads up, the website's down. It's not up.
The city website or the link to the tree? Yeah, I couldn't get to it either.
It's on the Parks and Rec.
It's on the Parks and Rec.
Of the city's website is where it is.
Okay. Because there's a link on the tree, on the, on the tree section or it's, it's bad. So just.
That, that's a good notice. That's one thing we're also working on is transitioning that some of the, the tree website stuff from a previous board member that was maintaining it over to some other format, probably on some of the city websites. But hopefully I can report more positively on that next year.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Carson, for pointing that out too. Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the next item on the, the agenda. City Manager Legal Motion Authorizing the Sponsorship of Five Thousand Dollars to Eight Entities in Varying Amounts as Detailed in the Council Communication. Ms. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. So as council knows, we annually budget ten thousand dollars to provide a sponsorship funds for special events in our community that enhance the quality of life and also have the potential to attract tourism. We split that, five thousand for the first half and five thousand for the second half. And so our sponsorship committee, which is Counselor Carson and Counselor V Hill, with the assistance of myself and Dalton from Parks and Rec, met to review the applications. And the recommendation that was included in your council communication is as follows. The ones I'm listing first are regulars that we have funded in the past. So the first one is SUDS for SARS twenty-two-three, a cash support of seven hundred plus use of the stage valued at two hundred. Octo Brew Fest, a cash support of nine hundred plus use of the stage at two hundred and the tent at three hundred. SLV Pride Fest twenty-two-three, cash support of nine hundred plus use of the stage and the tent. Splash Land Kids Only Triathlon of five hundred. Splash Land Annual Benefit Sprint Triathlon, five hundred. The Third Annual Starry Night Ball was cash support of five hundred plus use of the pavilion estimated at about five hundred and seventy-five dollars from a value perspective. The Southern Colorado, this one's new, Southern Colorado Championship Series and Southern Colorado Birdies and Turkeys. So this is disc golf tournaments, a cash support of five hundred and the use of the course, which is valued at two hundred. And then National Night Out, a cash support of five hundred. And with that, either myself or Counselor Carson can answer any questions.
Okay, Council, we'll open it up for comments. Counsel Grego?
No, it's a good job. When we did changes on, on, on boards, I thought I was put on this board. But when I saw that you guys had met, I said, well, but you did a good job, so.
So I, I, I didn't keep notes from the meeting. So I'll double check with the clerk. So I'm sorry about that. Who were you replacing?
Mr. Carson.
Okay.
That's okay. No, I'm sure you did a great job. So, but that's, that's fine. Good job.
We'll make sure to make note of that.
Okay, Counsel Krip?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I looked over the, the choices that my coworkers here did. And I want to thank you for all your hard work. And just looking over what all the different organizations' needs and wants were, it looked like that you took each one in consideration and weighed them all fairly. And, and I appreciate, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the support of all the new ones and with the older ones as well.
Thank you, Counsel Krip. Counselor Hensley?
So I think it looks great. It's always great to be able to help out all of these events. And if there's no further comment, I'll go ahead and move that we authorize the five thousand dollars to the eight entities as detailed in this communication.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would like to make a comment real quick. Counsel Carson and Counsel V Hill, you all did a wonderful job. That's not an easy task, trying to divide up that amount of money into that many groups. And you all do a great job each year doing that. And just thank you so much. Makes it easier for all of us. So keep it up.
And Holly has confirmed going forward it is Counselor Grego, so.
Okay. All right. Okay. Start voting. Hey?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Counselor Hensley and followed by Counselor Grego?
So in this last couple of weeks, I did go to the Main Street Committee meeting and we have to work now.
Oh, you do?
We get homework and everything. It is pretty exciting. Obviously, just how vibrant the downtown's getting and all of the things that are going on and the continued growth and the buy-in from all of the downtown members. So we're at the point of actually having to do some homework. There's the talk of potentially doing some consumption, common consumption areas. And then the idea of urban renewal area versus maybe downtown development area. So a lot of different things where it's, those are big decisions. And so really doing some research and homework to make those decisions. And so, yes, we really, really work now.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Hensley. Counselor Grego?
Yes, I attended the Senior Citizens Board. And they made a couple of notes here. They've got a full crew that's going to New England this fall trip. Yeah, they've sold their, they sold this walk-in freezer that they had in there for a long time. They weren't using it. And they were able to get a pretty good decent price for it. So they sold that. Some of the stuff that they got going is ladies' teas. Tea. Men are welcome also, they said. So that's on May twelfth from two to four. They've had some computer groups, a computer group assessment coming in and talk about different stuff. Self-preparations, it's a, it's through the Alamosa County Health Department. They talk about the different stuff for seniors for planning for disasters and stuff like that. I think they're planning on going to Kiwanis to talk. And they're looking at maybe doing a Canyon City adventure. They keep, they, they keep pretty busy. They keep, you know, one thing I'd like to point out too is that Jasmine comes out there and she, she's really good, you know? And also they appointed a new board member, Lori Bassi. You know, she, she's a new board member. So that's all I got, man.
Okay, Counsel Grego, thank you. Up next, we have Counsel Carson.
So I attended a couple of meetings of the COG and the big thing that we're really focused on is the IGA and ten forty-one regs. So we're moving forward with that. We've got a closer to final draft that we received today, yesterday. You know, we, we keep editing it a little bit, but they've also touched on you know, the issues that the land use bill was gonna bring up. I'm not sure if everybody was familiar with twenty-three, two thirteen that the state was gonna pass. They were trying to pass it. Still, it's still in, trying to move forward. So we, we were tossing around the idea of, you know, taking a political position, which typically the COG doesn't do, but the land use bill as, as it stood at the beginning was really tough. It would have took a lot of the control or even, you know, the ability of us to do anything at a local level. It could have crippled the, the new development. You know what I mean? There's things like that that could have come about from that land use bill. So hopefully, when it does pass, it, it's looking like it's gonna be something a lot less of an overreach than it was. So I was, I was happy that the COG was able to take, you know, a position on that and think about doing that. It looks like we may not have to, but we are coming and getting closer to having an IGA with all municipalities and counties around the aquifer as a uniting factor and, you know, for protecting water and trying to keep it from going any direction. Not just north, but we're trying to cover all our bases. And so, you know, it's a, it's a monumental task to try to, to try to keep people at bay. So hopefully, we can come up with a good idea and, or a good, a good process. And we'll keep, I'll keep you guys updated on test how it's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Carson. That brings us, we had a, I'm sorry, Ms. Brooks, under staff announcements. Did you have any additional staff announcements?
I do. And I apologize. There's two items I realized I, I probably should have mentioned. As I listened to Counselor Carson update on the COG and some of those regional efforts, just a quick update on the opioid regional committee as well. You might notice a few advertisements. The group has decided to try to contract for halftime administrative help to kind of make sure the agendas are posted, that we've got minutes, that we're meeting the submissions for the grants that we got through the state, just to handle a lot of that because all of us on the committee are essentially volunteering and have full-time jobs. And I know Commissioner Lasky has really done an amazing job, but she's getting pulled in a lot of different directions. And so we will be advertising for that. The Prevention Support Committee as well was one of the three areas that we were gonna put funding towards for the first two years. So they will be advertising for a part-time person too, that would then create the content for prevention education. So there will be an advertisement for that. And then the last advertisement you might see is the second of the three areas that the funding was gonna be targeted to was increasing peer support for peer recovery. And so it would be an RFP for an agency that would manage that peer support efforts and make sure they have their right training, that they have a certain amount of events going on in each county, those types of things. And so a lot of it is really then gonna start turning into very tangible outcomes, which is exciting. And I think I did share they were successful in getting the grants. One to help with the inpatient treatment capital cost and the other to help open a recovery home here in Alamosa with some capital costs. And so really doing some great stuff. The other announcement I have is a little different, but I, I feel, given the situation, it's important to give you a heads up. Many of you may know that Ruthie Brown has her mother's garden. As she calls it off of two eighty-five in front of North River Greenhouse. It's something she created on her own out of her heart to, to recognize her mom. But it's on public right-of-way, didn't get permission from city C dot nor any of the private property owners adjacent to it. And somehow she was hooking into water. So we are putting a meter in. It shouldn't be a huge cost to pay for the water, but she was fairly upset about that. And so we've tried to explain, it's a private project. It's, it's something she wants to do. We have no say over it. Yes, we appreciate that it beautifies in a, in a public way, but it's not a city project. It's similar to when we had a gentleman three or five years ago, go and do some cleanup downtown and kill some weeds and wanted us to reimburse him for his costs. Like, thank you. We appreciate the work you've done, but this wasn't a city project. Like we would have done an RFP and we, you know, would have done things like that when we're dealing with city resources and city funding. But she was not very happy and, and so I would anticipate that she may be contacting you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Any comments to Ms. Brooks? Okay, Ms. Hensley? Oh, okay. Okay, well, that brings us down to council comments. Do we have any council comments? Okay, there you go. Counsel Hensley?
So a couple of areas. First, I want to add about the land use. Obviously, being the, our CML representative, CML has done phenomenal work to work on that land use. Kevin Bommer, our executive director and our legislative team. And I know we've had a lot of emergency or sudden meetings. A lot of things where we're trying to put a lot of pressure on Governor Polis and things like that, which I think has definitely made some impact. It may not go perfect the way we want, but boy, compared to how it looked from the beginning. And it is something that, this is where, I'll tell you, being part of CML and how strong CML is in the state of Colorado is huge. So I just thought I would add that. And just the amount of work that the CML does for all of our municipalities and communities, and especially on this one. So just thought I'd share that. It's that time of the year again. It's graduation time. And so just letting everybody know, I believe, and I don't know this one for sure, Trinidad, I think, is on Thursday. So don't quote me on that one. Adam State is on Saturday. We have our undergraduate graduation in the morning. And then we have our master's graduation in the afternoon. Super excited. It's gonna be a full house, but we invite anybody who wants to come just to watch. Also, there will be some live streaming. The other thing is, I'm sure everybody's heard, but we're super excited that we do have no longer an interim president at Adam State, but a full president with President Tamberg. So just thought I'd share that as well.
I'll just confirm, Mayor, the Trinidad State College is on Thursday, the eleventh, at eleven AM. And then the other item that the Trinidad State College Police Academy graduation, which we always have cadets already identified and doing internships of us to, to try to move. to to try to move directly into our department, is Friday, May nineteenth at ten AM, being held at ASU as well.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Hensley, and thank you, Ms. Brooks. Okay, we have Counsel Grego, Counselor Kribs?
I had met with our city manager. We had had some concerns from a citizen about the trash over by the levee with Mr. Martinez. And I know we were supposed to take a roll-off over there. He picked me up and took me back over there. We got maybe three or four people camping out there on the, that is, put a pile of stuff out there. And what's happening, too, now that the water is coming up, that thing is just flooding. So what's going, if we don't get to that stuff, that all that thing is gonna float down the river. And and also, the, I believe, the gentleman that had the salvage yard out there, somebody bought that property and they, what they did was they cleaned it out and made a big old pile out there and just left it.
Okay.
He pointed that out to me. And also, I said, I promised him that I would bring it to council, and I would say something at council.
So
Probably watching, so.
In regards to the the roll-off, we needed to wait. We had, we had already hand-delivered to everyone out at St. Benedict that they needed to get everything cleaned up, because they, we needed to raise the bar on the rubbish. And so we needed to, we had our extra roll-offs out there. And so we needed to get past the pickup. And so now I think we can bring the roll-out out to Mr. Martinez if we haven't already. So Harry was kind of waiting for that from the roll-off. But then also for our police department, obviously, the chief is here, so he can make a note on the illegal camping. And then also have him look at the salvage property to see if they have something that's violating from a nuisance perspective to follow up on.
He said he was gonna take his own backhoe out there and clean up some of that stuff. And I don't know how, there was some big, big concrete boulder blocking where you can't go through there. Somebody moved those. And how far they moved them? But now, now they got access back there. And I don't know if he was gonna correct that with with his own backhoe and put those back in place, you know? I just thought I'd point it out, and I saw it on the paper where there was a cleanup done. Somebody did a cleanup for Earth Day. I don't know if it's what area they went to, but but it it is pretty, pretty full back there. And the more time we spend not doing that, then that water's gonna take that thing up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Counsel Kribs?
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday, I had the pleasure of listening to a presentation by represent, by representative that works with SLV Go and the Dark Sky Communities. And I urge anyone who has a moment to listen to how much work they have done to date on on creating dark skies around, not just the sand dunes, but it's it's around that whole mountain area. And I even traveled, it was meaningful to me, because I traveled to West Cliff over the weekend, just as a a day trip. And they actually advertised that, you know, welcome, welcome to us. We are proud to be a dark sky community. And they use it in advertising for motel rooms and, you know, come on out on Friday night, we're doing this for the dark sky community. And so I would like to urge my fellow counsel to keep that in the forefront when that comes before us again with ideas or ways that we can help develop the city in even the smallest steps towards becoming a true dark side community. Fiscally, at least. And my only other announcement was, also on Monday, it was the first night of roller skating. So please, I urge everyone to get out there and show me what you got. Thank you.
All right, be careful when you said that to Ms. Brooks, because she showed me up last year. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so I'll I'll wrap everything up, counsel. Thank you for all the comments. I would like to thank Mr. Loy on behalf of counsel. We want to thank you for stepping in tonight for Mr. Suisao. We appreciate you being here tonight.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is I want to thank the staff. We have an amazing staff. When you start adding up the millions of dollars in grants that we get, it is truly unbelievable sometimes. But I want to thank them for the Targeted Airport Housing Grant that they received for two point three million dollars. So that's really amazing. So staff, we appreciate everything that you do in that area. Also had an opportunity to participate in the generosity on Tap fundraiser event by La Pointe. Benefiting the food bank, and it was great community support. So some of the people in the audience who were out there this weekend as well. And then the last thing, I would like to just encourage our community to come out and support the Cinco de Mayo events that are coming up this Friday. So if there's no other items on the agenda, this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Ready? Appreciate you all. Thank you all so much.